Good evening. We will now begin the City of Boynton Beach City Commissioners Meeting, Tuesday, November 21st, 2017, at 6:30 PM. Would everyone please rise for invocation by Commissioner McCray, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance?
Let us bow to the creative make of all mankind. Father, here we are once more again, asking that you look upon this city. Father, as we celebrate Thanksgiving, we want to pray for those who are less fortunate than we are. As we celebrate, let us not forget our brothers and sisters as we prepare a sumptuous meal for those who don't have anything to eat. Father, I'm just grateful tonight. I pray for the Wildcats. I'm glad that they are in the audience this afternoon. I want to say thank you for putting the hedge protection around them. When I was receiving phone calls about gunshots being fired, I didn't know what to do except turn to you. I want to just tell you, thank you. Thank you for the parents. Thank you for Michael Byrd, who stayed there and said that I'm going to continue, Commissioner McCray, to do what is best for this group. And I'm just grateful tonight for the outcome, for the outpouring. As I look out upon this city and this commission chambers tonight, and see so many young men, boys and girls, I'm just grateful tonight that they're here for a happy reason and not a sad reason. As we deliberate tonight upon what we're supposed to be doing, the business of this city, we have sent your letters to it in peace and love with all mankind. It's my prayer. In your name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
I'd like to remind everyone to please silence their phones, and may I have a roll call?
Mayor Grant?
Here.
Vice Mayor Katz, absent. Commissioner McCray?
Here.
Commissioner Romulus?
Present.
And Commissioner Casello, absent. There is a quorum, Mayor.
All right, appreciate it. Any additions, deletions, or corrections to the agenda? I'd like to add an item to new business, the approved negotiated settlement in the case of Hassan Kalasihakun versus the City of Boynton Beach. And also, I'd like to add an announcement with the Boynton Beach Wildcats to give them the time that they need to present for us. 4D.
Motion to approve as amended.
Second.
All those in favor, state so by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Agenda is approved. Informational items. Commissioner McCray?
Thank you, sir. I don't want to take up more time than I need tonight. I want the Wildcats to have all the time. They need Wildcats. You rock. I like them. Thank you.
All right, well, on November 8th, I attended a meeting with our pension consultant, Aon Hewitt. And that evening, I attended the Flood Awareness Workshop with the Intracoastal Park Clubhouse. I'd like to thank again to Colin, Rebecca Harvey, and all the city staff that was there. We're really making a difference regarding citizen education. On the 9th, I attended Forest Park Elementary for the new Ben Carson Reading Room, and I got to meet Candy Carson there. And hopefully, we can get HUD to help us out in Boynton Beach. In addition, I attended South Tech Summit, the Healthier Boynton Beaches luncheon, and I attended the City's Stop the Bleed seminar, or seminar, regarding what to do in case someone's bleeding. On the 10th, I attended Kaiser University's 40th Anniversary, and on November 11th, on Veterans Day. I was there at the event for Veterans Park, for Blue Star Highway at the Intracoastal Park, and at Hunter's Run. On the 15th, I attended the National League of Cities in Charlotte, and got a lot of useful information that I've shared with the city manager to make Boynton Beach better. On the 18th, I was at the sauna, the traveling sauna, and it was a great time. I put a video out there on my page. And then I took our delegates from Rama, Finland, our sister city, to Troy's, and they had the best time there. That evening, I attended the Leukemia and Lymphoma Society's Walk and the FAU game. And yesterday, I was at Leisureville to present what's going on with the city. Commissioner Romulus?
Good afternoon, everyone. It's always a pleasure to see a full house and to have our illustrious Wildcats here with us. Just a few things to announce. I also got to meet with the delegates from Rama, Finland. Got to have them have an opportunity to be showcased, or to have our city staff showcase all the great things that Boynton Beach is doing to them. And I saw them taking notes, definitely learning from us, and taking some of these things, planning to take some of these things back to Finland, to also grow their communities and grow their country as well. I just came from a turkey drive, turkey giveaway drive, that was happening here on Northeast Third Street at the Hazana Alliance Church. This was in partnership with Growing Strong Ministries, which is a ministry that's helping to just feed local families. So we gave about 100-plus turkeys away, and not just turkeys, but they called a Thanksgiving basket. So that included bread and beans and different things, basically to make it a complete Thanksgiving meal, not just a turkey. So definitely honored to be a part of that event. So for now, that is all I have. Thank you, Mayor.
Next, we have announcements. City Hall will be closed for the Thanksgiving holiday on Thursday, November 23rd, and Friday, November 24th, 2017. Next, we have an announcement by Recreation and Parks Director Wally Majors for the upcoming holiday events.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners, and ladies and gentlemen. Once again, I'm here to announce the upcoming holiday events that we have planned here in the city. On Friday, December 1st, at 7 o'clock, we have the holiday meeting, movie, at the amphitheater. Saturday, December 2nd, 4:00 PM, we have our annual holiday parade. And subsequently, on that evening, approximately 5:30 by the amphitheater, we will have the lighting of the holiday tree. On Friday, December 8th, at 6 o'clock, we have the holiday parade. And on Friday, December 15th, we will have Music on the Rocks. And this evening, I'm also here to proudly announce the grand marshal that was chosen this year by the, from the nominations we received. And the grand marshal was chosen by the Recreation and Parks Advisory Board. And if I may ask Enrique Zanetto to join me at the front, and the mayor, if he could join me just for a very quick picture. And if I may read from the nomination we received for Mr. Zanetto, he has worked at the Soup Kitchen of Boynton Beach for 20 years, starting out as a volunteer, and he is now the Executive Director. Under his leadership, the Soup Kitchen has grown tremendously, from its initial grassroots beginning, serving mainly immigrant farm workers to what it is today, reaching all corners of the city. He has the doors open 365 days a year, and in August, September alone, they served over 40,000 meals to those in need. His latest achievement was securing a grant for and implementing a very successful Meal and Wheels program to feed many shut-ins in our city. He is also instrumental in partnering with our local schools and Boynton Beach Police to help collect donations of food and baby supplies. Enrique went above and beyond-
Sir, if you can go over there, please, so that we can look at you. Thank you.
Enrique went above and beyond to help our local homeless population, about 20 people who wouldn't go to a shelter during the hurricane. He opened the doors of the Soup Kitchen, allowing them to stay with him to ride out the storm. Even though the facility did not have electricity for 10 days, he opened the doors each day and did what he could to help the residents. So I'm proud to announce that the grand marshal for our parade this year is Enrique Zanetto.
City of Boynton Beach proclamation. Whereas the City of Boynton Beach celebrates our local small businesses and the contributions they make to our local economy and community. According to the United States Small Business Administration, there are currently 28.8 million small businesses in the United States. They represent 99.7% of all businesses with employees in the United States, and are responsible for 63% of net new jobs created over the past 20 years. And whereas small businesses employ 48% of all businesses with employees in the United States. And whereas, on an average, 33% of consumers' holiday shopping will be done at a small, independently-owned retailers and restaurants. And whereas, 91% of all consumers believe that supporting small, independently-owned restaurants and bars is important. And whereas, 76% of all consumers plan to go to one or more small businesses as part of their holiday shopping. And whereas, the City of Boynton Beach, Florida supports our local businesses that create jobs, boost our local economy, and preserve our neighborhoods. And whereas advocacy groups, as well as public and private organizations across the country, have endorsed the Saturday After Thanksgiving as Small Business Saturday. Now therefore, I, Stephen B. Grant, Mayor of the City of Boynton Beach, do hereby proclaim November 25th, 2017, a Small Business Saturday. And now, we have the announcement from the Wildcats.
My name is Michael Byrd, President of the East Point Wildcats, 548 Northwest, 13th Avenue, Apartment B, Boynton Beach, Florida. I stand here before you tonight, Mayor, City Commission, City Manager, to talk about some of the 2017 accomplishments we have this year. We started our eighth season with 322 kids and over 100 volunteers. This year, we were the Orange Bowl Parker of the Year for the third year in a row. We also have a Miami Dolphins Team Mom of the Week, Trenae Fields. A Miami Dolphins Athlete of the Week, Snyder Joseph. We also have our cheerleaders here tonight, who went to the Orange Bowl competition two weeks ago, and out of 18 teams in their division, placed second place. We have our 12-year-old, 12-and-under football team, which is in the white uniforms, played in the Super Bowl on Sunday, and we came a little short, but we're always champions. We came second place in the Super Bowl, so we're the runner-up for the 2017 Super Bowl in the 12-year division. And the youngest ones that can play tackle football, you probably see them here, they're little, but they're four- and five-year-olds who play tackle football, and they are the 2017 Super Bowl champions. So I just want to say thank you for all the support from the city, the commission, the mayor, the city manager. Chief Katz is not here tonight. I really want to thank him in front of everybody as well, for always supporting us and giving us the opportunity to operate here in the City of Boynton Beach, and continue doing things for the youth in our community. We will be working on our end-of-season award ceremony. Those invitations will be going out for that, and we'll start doing our spring football session after that. So with that being said, thank you very much, and we appreciate all the support.
I'd like to have all the Wildcat parents that sit here tonight, if you all could just stand, the parents.
This is a very small portion, just so you know.
Okay. But thank God for the small portion. But I really, please keep standing. I really want to tell you all thank you. As a Commissioner of this city, I have never been so proud to tell you all thanks for hanging in there. When they was calling me, talking about there was gunshots, you all did not give up. I really appreciate that. When the scoreboard was all dilapidated and had fallen apart, Commissioner Casello, he's not here tonight, and I, along with the city manager and some others in this community, Mr. Major, we championed together, saying, you know what, we got to do better. I'm glad that we invested in you. This is your city, you invested in us. And to Mr. Byrd, I want to tell you, sir, thank you. Thank you, thank you. To the coaches, thank you. Don't ever give up on young people. They're not our future, they are our present. We have to invest now. Thank you.
And yeah, I would just like to say, I was able to make, attend a Wildcats game this year. You guys are doing great work out there. I was able to go, actually, I remember now, the training facility, going to Miami Dolphins Training Facility. So you guys are definitely expanding these young man's mind of what's going outside of Boynton Beach, and showing them what the world has to offer, and I really appreciate that. How'd you guys do in Orlando?
We did, we did well. It helped us for the season. There's two things that we did prior to the season with two age groups, and both of those age groups are the ones that went to the Super Bowl and are here tonight.
Wow. So I guess we have to do that for all the age groups now?
Yeah, we are on top of it.
Okay. All right, thank you again.
I will just add one more comment. It's amazing, because it almost feels like we're sitting in a stadium tonight with all these applauses and everyone. So it's really tremendous to just see all these beautiful faces, these young faces. Just as Commissioner McCray said it so eloquently, these kids are not just our future, they are our present. And I love the fact that we have such dedicated parents and dedicated coaches who are investing in them right now and teaching them these just amazing skills, not just for football or for cheerleading, but for life. So thank you for what you do. Thank you all, the parents, for your commitment and your dedication. I appreciate you.
The city manager asked me, was it appropriate? I know it's not appropriate for you all to play football in the chambers, but she wanted to know just the cheerleaders, since you all came in. Could y'all just do a cheer for us, please? Come on, just one. One small one. Yeah. Yeah, come on. Hey, you better hurry up, we have a commission meeting. Don't call my name now, okay? Thank you.
Make them work tonight.
We did not shout it out with you all, but we go, Wildcats, okay? Thank you.
Can we do this every meeting?
Next, we will open up to public audience. Individual speakers will be limited to three-minute presentations. Please state your name and address for the record.
Yeah, and if y'all have to leave, this would be a good time. Thank you.
Yeah, and if y'all have to leave, this would be a good time. Thank you.
Um, yeah, yeah, no, that's, that's fine.
It's like, what did we do?
There's nothing going on anywhere.
Why they leave it if some of y'all want to move over there? It's fine, because we went sucking it out.
Thank you.
Good night.
Okay. All right. Seeing no one coming up for public audience, this will be a first. We're moving on to-
Oh, wait, no.
Nope. Spoke too soon.
There's a big line tonight. Yeah, to wait, sorry. Susan Oyer, 140 Southeast, 27th Way. Okay, so I'll put that on the record. Commissioner Casello will be upset he missed my handouts this week. Mayor Grant, I know this is a repeat of what you get, because you already get Florida Trend Magazine. Hopefully, I inspired a reader out of you. This is in the most current edition, and it talks about green governments. And since we're doing all this construction in the town square, I think maybe it's time for us to look at, you know, our green ordinances and what we can do to make our buildings and all the construction down here as 21st, 22nd century as possible. But I wanted to point out in this article from the current Florida Trend Magazine, that there are 70 green cities and counties in the state of Florida, and I think maybe we should be putting ourselves on this list and moving ourselves forward. I wanted to also point out in the second, on the green government side, on the second column, it mentions Miami Dade has expedited permit review process for green private sector projects. Maybe that's something we should be looking at doing too, as another incentive to go green. And in the last column, it mentions going green helps local governments reduce water and energy use, save money, and please residents concerned about the environment, as well as it being a good way to help the planet and save taxpayer dollars. Also, note down in the middle below the picture, there's a little blurb that says, "Last year, Miami Beach began requiring developers of projects bigger than 7,000 square feet to conserve energy and water, or pay the city a impact fee of 5% of total construction cost." Oh, Commissioner Casello and Commissioner Katz, yay, handout day! Yay! Something for Thanksgiving!
We wouldn't have missed it if we were-
I was so worried! And on the backside, there's a nice little story about residential solar, since I know I'm also involved in CIPAC, and we are pushing the Solar Co-op program here in Boynton Beach. But there's a story about that on the backside. But I really wanted you guys to take a look at the green government side on the front. And thank you. Have a great Thanksgiving, everybody.
Cindy Falco de Carrato, 316 Northwest First Avenue. I came to share with you that the heart of Boynton Beach will be giving out individual meals this Thanksgiving. Will be at the Carolyn Sims Park from 11 to 1:00. There'll be individualized turkey dinners with the whole fixings, so that they can take them and then go either sit in the park or go to their homes and eat, so that everybody just kind of comes through. But we have about 150 of them, so I did want to let everybody know, anybody in need, or anybody who's just by themselves for Thanksgiving, you don't feel like cooking your Thanksgiving meal, come on by, pick up one and enjoy it. And I wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving. God bless. Bye-bye.
Mayor, just a point of information. Why is everyone sitting on that side, no one on that?
See, that's what happens when you come late to the meeting.
You missed it. You came in late.
It reminds me a lot of my wedding.
I'm wondering about Item B regarding the Aldi. Do I speak about that now, or?
No. If you want to speak about Aldi, it'd be at that time. We'll have it for public comments.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, welcome back. Dr. Blas, 113 West Tara Lakes Drive, Boynton Beach, Florida, 33436. I spent several weeks in Fayetteville, Arkansas, teaching at the university, they're teaching the Razorbacks how to play football. And anyway, they agreed to be our sister city in the future. And then I also spent some time in-
Don't hold the microphone, then we won't hear the feedback.
Oh, I'm so sorry. Now, I come back to Boynton Beach, and you guys are doing an incredible job. I especially want to congratulate the mayor. It's phenomenal.
Don't hold the microphone.
It's totally phenomenal. McCray hasn't changed a bit. He's still correcting me.
Thank you.
McCray, you can do everything for me, but you can never bury me. But now, let's, let's continue a little bit. So first of all, collective congratulations to the mayor, to all of you. We obviously saved the old high school. There were some people trying to tear it down. They have since left town, and, you know, they're all in shame. And I, you know, again, Grant, man, you, you guys put it together, and now it's not going to die. It's impossible. Even McCray cannot bury it. Never mind. So now, so basically, I come back, and I see the city is ready for the next stage. And you know that I am running for mayor in March. And the next stage for the city is to build on what you've already done. I will mention two additions, if I may. One is that I was going to build the highest building in the world where the high school is, but I'm going to let Grant just finish that job quietly. You just promised me a classroom for the University of Boynton with fiber optics.
It's not for you. It's a classroom.
A classroom, yes, but for the University of Boynton. Thank you. And I can use it. Now, the second thing, so thank you for that ahead of time. The actual university building, the tallest building in the world, will be located where the mall is. The mall is quietly dying. And what we're going to do is build something really huge, give everybody, we're not chasing them out. Jacy Penney may be dying, but we'll still give them room, and all these different stores are going to survive. But the building will be so tall, will bring enough income, dear citizens, that we will be refunding your property taxes, just like they do in Alaska. You know, in Alaska, because of oil, they do this. The other project is, of course, and I know all of you know we are the closest to the Gulf Stream, but at the next step, and by the way, congratulations, Justin, on your union job. I'm so proud of you. He's my representative. But anyway, we're going to get energy from the Gulf Stream. And you know, there is a little city in Japan, forgot the name, that is giving free, wait, free energy to Bitcoin miners. Have you read about it? They are swimming in money.
I'm a-
So as long, well, it's time up completely, but I just, I wasn't here for four months, so let me take 30 more seconds.
No, no, this-
Okay, so anyway, I'm not campaigning against you, Grant. So my point is, yeah, we're going to build a big building, refund your taxes, get energy from the Gulf Stream, and God bless you. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Public audience is now closed. Moving on to administrative. We have no people who are applying to the advisory boards. I believe it's next meeting is when a lot of them are re-upped. The positions, in addition to those available, is the Arts Commission, Building Board of Adjustments and Appeals, Employee Pension Board, Library Board, and Senior Advisory Board. Moving on to consent agenda. Would someone like to pull an item? Seeing none, may I have a motion to approve?
I move.
Second.
All those in favor, state so by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Consent agenda is approved. Moving on to bids and purchases over $100,000. Approve issue purchase order for paving project to the Paving Lady Inc. of Boynton Beach in the amount of $98,684 plus a 10% contingency for a total cost of $108,584. The roadway project was divided into six projects in order to allow local businesses within Boynton Beach to quote on individual projects, and to allow the city toward individual projects as opposed to issuing a formal bid for all projects together.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes, I would just really quickly like to, again, commend staff for their diligence in bringing about this policy, where we can give precedent to our local business owners. I look forward to the disparity study, which is a topic of hot debate up in the county. But I look forward to that coming through, and for us to even be able to go further and start awarding our minority and women-owned businesses as well. So again, I thank staff for their diligence, and I think this commission for taking the initiative to move forward on thinking outside the box and helping to build the wealth within Boynton Beach. Thank you.
All those in favor, state so by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion is approved. Moving on to public hearing. The City Commission will conduct these public hearings in its dual capacity as local planning agency and city commission. Item A is approve Exeter Sterling Records Phase III Major Site Plan Modification to construct a 1-story, 56,160-square-foot warehouse building and related site improvements located at 1210 Southwest 35th Avenue in the M1 Industrial Zoning District, applicant Alan Hendricks.
Good evening, Commissioners, and Mr. Mayor, and audience.
I have to swear you in?
Swear me.
Do you swear or affirm that your testimony will be true?
I do.
Thanks.
Good evening. Before you is a property, this is an extension of an existing- Before you is a property, this is an extension of an existing commercial campus. It's industrial use. It is between Congress and Calusa Park on the left-hand side or the north side of 35th Street. As I mentioned, I don't have a clicker. Can I go forward and backward? Oh, never mind.
Good evening.
Good evening. Well, it's a little easier to read back here. The right is our proposed site. The existing site is to the south. Calusa Park is to the right on the slide. Thank you. So it's an existing use. Our clients have just finished up that parcel. They bought the parcel behind us. We split it off from another industrial site, and the building will look very much like the building in front of it, which is a very attractive warehouse use. It's been a good neighbor. It's been in the neighborhood for a good while. I'm excited about bringing this to Boynton Beach because we well need this type of product for our tax base in Boynton Beach. That's it.
Alan, they'll be storing records in here, strictly records?
No, no. This initially started out as a project called Sterling Records, and that was the intent. Sterling Records has long gone away. This project has been in the development stages for 10 years, maybe. They phased it, so no, there's no records there. It's a warehouse building. But there's no Sterling Records.
And what will they be warehousing in there?
We don't know. We don't know. It's not zoned. The client didn't want it zoned for manufacturing, so we won't be manufacturing there. It's just simply warehouse.
Alan, let me ask you a question. So right now, we're just doing the warehouse. We don't have anyone who's committed to say, "I want to move in."
That's correct.
Okay, I'm...okay.
So the new building will have greater improvement value there by increasing the city's taxes?
Yes.
Okay. Well, I'm in then, too.
It's a vacant lot right now. It's a parcel that was not being used behind a yellow freight site. The yellow freight is our neighbor. That's who we split the parcel with. We convinced them to sell that part of the parcel that they weren't using. So it was just, it's vacant and loaded with earleaf acacia, which is a pest plant, and not really doing much. It's really an attractive addition to the city, and...
Motion to approve.
Which is nice for industrial, because industrial can...some of the industrial we have is a little rough.
Second.
Any discussion from the public? Seeing none, any further discussion from the board? Seeing none. All those in favor state so by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Susan, if I had a camera, you'd look just all over there by yourself. I'm just saying, but like...
Next, we will have approve Aldi grocery land use and rezoning to support the intended 17,880-square-foot grocery store building and related site improvements at 3452 West Boynton Beach Boulevard, applicant Bonnie Miskel, Danae Miskel, and Bachman.
I need to swear them in, too, right? Are all three of you going to speak on the Aldi item? Okay, raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm that your testimony will be true? Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, City Administration, and Staff. My name is Andrea Kaiser with the firm of Danae Miskel and Bachman. On behalf of the applicant, our address is 14 Southeast 4th Street, Suite 36, Boca Raton, Florida, 33432. Thank you so much for this opportunity to present this evening, and a happy Thanksgiving to everyone. Before we begin, we'd just like to give you a brief overview about Aldi. Aldi operates in more than 1,600 stores in 35 states, and because of that, has become one of America's favorite grocers, and we're sure they'll become one of your favorite grocers as well. But they're not just a domestic brand. They're also a widely respected international brand that was first opened in 1961 Germany. And what makes Aldi unique is that, according to Market Force Information, Aldi is a value leader among grocery stores in the United States for six years in a row. They offer fresh meats, fresh fish, fresh produce, baby products, and home goods. And what makes Aldi even more unique is that they were recognized in 2014 as Retailer of the Year for their private brand development. They offer their own brands and test these products to meet or beat national brand quality. Aldi also partners with local farmers when possible, is gluten and organic conscious, and in 2012 was recognized in supermarket news for its efforts in promoting a healthy diet. Tonight, you'll be considering the applicant's future land use map amendment and rezoning applications. If you take a look on the screen, on the left side of the screen is a snapshot of the city's future land use map, and the development site is indicated in the green circle. And as you can see from the map, the current future land use designation is office commercial and is currently in isolated classification. The properties fronting West Boynton Beach Boulevard are predominantly local retail commercial, and the applicant is proposing a future land use map amendment for local retail commercial. Similarly, if you look on the right-hand side of the map, is a snapshot of the city's zoning map. And again, the development site is circled in green, and you'll see that the existing zoning, C1, is also an isolated classification. A significant number of properties fronting West Boynton Beach Boulevard is Zone C3, and the applicant is proposing to rezone this property to C3. If you recall, the third criteria for these two applications is specifically intended to prevent these isolated classifications. Therefore, the applicant's request is more consistent with neighboring properties, minimizes land use conflicts, and the proposed project complements the existing uses in the area. Your backup includes our responses to all of the criteria, and staff has determined that our applications meet the criteria, and we thank them for their collaboration on this project and their recommendation of approval. At the end of this presentation, we're happy to answer any specific questions if you have any specifically about the criteria. At our second reading, you'll learn more about the project's site plan, about a variance that we're requesting for a small portion of the building, and a few community design appeals that have primarily to do with aesthetics. Again, we'll be making a full presentation in greater detail at the second reading, but we're happy to answer any questions. In closing, we would like to offer two additional points for consideration. One, on October 24th, we presented in front of the Planning and Development Board meeting. It was an excellent, well-rounded meeting. There was a lot of great questions from the board. They gave a very thorough review, and we're grateful for their recommendation of approval. The second consideration is that the applicant held a community meeting with the adjacent neighboring property, and it is our...and they are in support of this project, and to date, we haven't received any opposition from that community. This concludes our presentation, and we have a representative from Aldi here, Jordan Ford. We're happy to answer questions, or Jordan's happy to answer questions. We also have a representative from our engineering firm, Kristen, who's here to answer any questions as well. Thank you very much.
Commissioner McCray.
Thank you. First of all, I'd like to know, in Palm Beach County, where is the closest Aldi located?
Delray Beach.
Delray Beach. Where about in Delray Beach?
Military.
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 Are you scared to talk to us or just another of them? You know, you can come up and answer the questions. Might have some worse. I might ask for discounts, you know?
Absolutely.
That's by my way. No, I can't do that. Okay. No, the closest one is in Delray on Military Trail.
Delray off Military, correct.
Okay. I'm just, I know in Broward, kind of worked on, and I seen the Aldi store, and I kept saying, "Oh," and then when I get the flyers and I see it, I'm saying, "Oh, well, I'm excited."
Good. We are, too.
Yes. Have you reached out to the surrounding neighborhoods? Everyone's on board with this? No opposition? I hear, I think I heard you say. Is that true?
That's correct. We've reached out to the neighboring communities and have no opposition so far.
Okay. Give me a little education on how you market Aldi. Is it like, I've never been in one. Is it bulk buying, like a BJ's or a Costco, or is it like a Publix?
No, it's not like a BJ's or a Costco. We don't do any of the bulk buying. Everything that we do at Aldi is based upon efficiencies, which we save that customer's money and pass that on to our customers. So although we stock products in cases, each one is individually sold, so we don't do any bulk purchases or anything like that.
So if someone was going to come in to buy a canned good, they wouldn't have to buy a whole case of canned goods? They could individual cans?
Correct. They could if they wanted to, but yeah, they could also buy the individual.
Sure. Okay, thank you.
I used to have an office right there next to 200 Canute. I spoke with the property owner there. He's in favor of it. I know that, I believe that site used to be a, what is it, at DMV? Or no? MV, yeah. Or Social Security, and it's been vacant for decades, probably, or so I'm glad to see more development coming into Boynton Beach. I've been to your store before. It's definitely of value and feel that it's going to add value to Boynton Beach. Any further comments?
May I just, the time the public gets to speak on this?
Yes.
Karen?
I would ask sir to please provide his name and address for the record.
Jordan Ford, Director of Real Estate with Aldi Foods, 1171 North State Road 7.
Hi, Susan Oyer, 140 Southeast 27th Way. I would say I have a horrible craving for the cranberry almond chicken salad, and you don't stock it in your West Palm store, so please stock it in the Boynton store. It is my newest obsession in life, and if you have not yet tried it, don't, because you're going to become as obsessed as I am. Thank you.
Good evening. Mark Hare, 248 Main Boulevard. When, and I want to commend Aldi's and speak in favor of this, I would like to know, because, yes, this is going to be helping our tax base, because it's going to be an improvement to that site, in addition to that, how many employees, and if you could give the breakout, full-time and part-time, and the range in wages, because that impacts our community as well?
Sure. I think typically, we have about 20 employees per store. As far as full-time and part-time employees, I think it's about 15, full-time and five part-time. As far as wages, it ranges anywhere from $13 an hour, and our managers are salaried employees.
Okay. Carol Porter, 1811 Banyan Creek Circle North in Stonehaven. So you folks have met with the residents in Stonehaven. They're giving the development a go? Is that true? Okay. I just wondered if there were any particulars about what the building looks like, the traffic around, you know, traffic buffering, that sort of thing, so they have less impacts to the residents in the community, because we've lived there for a long time. Thank you.
We'll be addressing a lot of those elements at the second reading when we discuss the site plan.
I live close to you, Tara Lakes, and welcome. It sounds like a wonderful idea, and I know exactly where you are. This could be as good time as many, something I forgot to say, but I will say it because it's...oh, yeah, it's very relevant, you know, and McCray probably would love this. Gertrude Store. There's a need for a beautiful store on Martin Luther King Boulevard. Is anybody working on that? You know, Gertrude, that was a dream, Gertrude Sullivan.
Right, we...
So that does not address it. So I'm encouraging you, take a look at that as well. There are people who have been dreaming in the heart of Boynton to have a wonderful store. And really, the same, next thing I'm going to say is, because I forgot, let's put all the electric power lines underground in Boynton. I was watching you from a distance without power, and I was getting sick for you, so...okay, God bless. Thank you.
Second.
Well, you have two ordinances.
Yep.
So the first is 17-32, an ordinance of the city of Boynton Beach, Florida, amending Ordinance 89-38 by amending the future land use element of the comprehensive plan for property commonly known as Aldi and described herein, owned by MG3, 3452 West Boynton LLC, changing the land use designation from Office Commercial OC to Local Retail Commercial LRC, providing for conflict severability and effective date.
Motion to approve ordinance 17-032.
Second.
May I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Casella?
Yes.
Mayor Grant?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Katz?
Yes.
Commissioner McCray?
Yes.
And Commissioner Romulus?
Aye.
The vote is five to zero.
Motion to approve ordinance number 17-033.
Second.
Got to read it.
An ordinance of the city of Boynton Beach, Florida, amending Ordinance 02-013 to rezone a parcel of land described herein and commonly referred to as Aldi, from Office Professional C1 to Community Commercial C2, providing for conflict severability and an effective date. Correction, it's C3.
It says three, C3.
On what I have?
C3 over here. C1, C3.
On the agenda, it's cover sheet, it says C3.
Agenda says C3. The hard copy you gave me says C2. Staff? Certification from staff, please.
Yes.
Swear or affirm that your testimony will be true?
I do. Ed Brice, Principal Planner, it is supposed to be C3.
So the ordinance should say amending it from C1 to C3. All right, so we need to read, we need to correct the hard copy. Yes.
So... Yep.
Mayor Grant?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Katz?
Yes.
Commissioner McCray?
Yes.
Commissioner Romulus?
Aye.
And Commissioner Casella?
Yes.
Vote is five to zero.
And may I have a motion to table Items C, D, and E?
I move.
Second.
All those in favor state so by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed. Items C, D, and E will be tabled to next city commissioners' meeting to coincide with the second reading of the land use and rezoning ordinance. Moving on to unfinished business, the item has been removed at the request for rate increased.
I'd like to just make a comment, since it has been removed, and that was, I was the one that asked staff to bring back, you know, telling us how much was we paying the magistrate, you know, that did community service, and that was just $100 per hour, but that is the lowest anywhere. And, you know, I guess, I guess, by stating that, it must have got a little cold feet, but anyway, I'm glad it's off the table. We don't have to do anything now.
All right. Next, new business, proposed resolution number 17-118, authorize the mayor to sign the First Amendment to the interlocal agreement between the city of Boynton Beach and Boynton Beach CRA for the CRA funding of the Neighborhood Officer Police Program for full year 1718, fiscal year 1718, for an amount not to exceed $372,000.
I move.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, may have, all those in favor state so by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, resolution has passed. Next is, I have requested approval for $500 of my community support funds to be donated to the Boynton Beach Garden Club. This money will be used at that garden that the city owns at the southwest corner of Northwest 6th Avenue and Seacrest. They are applying for a grant.
Southwest or northwest? I think it's northwest.
The southwest corner of Northwest 6th Avenue.
Confuse me a little. Just northwest.
Northwest 6th Avenue and Seacrest.
Anyway, I'd like to say, I'm glad that, you know, you're giving your $500, but I really want to say to staff, thank you for going in there and cleaning up, because drugs was in there, and I was the one that said that we need to get in there. You all went in there, and I thought the garden club was already in there. I'm just saying. But I seen them tearing down everything, and I want to just tell you all, thank you for a job well done. I can come through there now and look all the way clear through, and I could see anybody in there. Appreciate it.
Next, we have approved the request of Commissioner Romulus to distribute $500 of her community support funds to growing, strong ministries for their Thanksgiving food drive.
I'll move.
Second.
Commissioner Romulus, you all want something to say?
I did in my informational comments, but I'll feel free, I will repeat it again. Just, I do want to commend this organization for the work that they're doing. Today alone, while I was there, I saw over 100 families come through and receive not just turkeys, but also other, the fixings that would make a complete meal. So this organization is doing some great work here in Boynton, feeding several hundred families, so I do thank the commission for approving this in advance.
All those in favor state so by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes. Moving on to proposed ordinance number 17-034, first reading, adopt the Boynton Beach Administrative Amendments to the Sixth Edition of the Florida Building Code. May I have a motion to approve?
I'll move.
Second. All right. Staff, can you please come up and explain what we are amending?
You need the commission, mayor, city manager. Basically, Chapter 1 of the Florida Building Code.
Name, name, name. They don't know your name.
Oh, I do apologize. Shane Kittenorf, bidding official, city of Boynton Beach. Can I move?
Yep. Now you can. It made it a lot more serious than it did.
So every three years, we go through a cycle change and an update to our codes. So in the Chapter 1, we go through a, what we call a home rule within the city, and we update our Chapter 1 ordinance to make sure that the administrative rules and regulations are updated concurrent to the state regulations and to mimic as close as possible to the county regulations at the same time. So basically, this is just an enhancement of our regulations moving forth to the Florida Building Code, Chapter 1.
All right. Yep.
Second.
All right. May I have a roll call, please?
Mayor Katz?
Yes.
Commissioner McCray?
Yes.
Commissioner Romulus?
Aye.
Mr. Casello?
Yes.
And Mayor Grant?
Yes.
Five to zero.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Next, we have proposed ordinance number 17-035, first reading, approve the changes in qualifying dates for candidates in the upcoming municipal elections.
Motion to approve.
Second. Any discussion from the board? Saying none. May I have a roll call, please?
Commissioner McCray?
I just said no, aye.
Commissioner Romulus?
Yes.
Mr. Casello?
Yes.
Mayor Grant?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Katz?
Yes.
Vote is five to zero.
All right. And then Commissioner Romulus wanted to give us an update on the TPS that we voted on.
Mayor, before we do that, we had that settlement item we added to the agenda.
Yep.
I thought we were going to, yeah, under new business, so let's do it under legal.
Appreciate it, because I did forget. So next, for new business items D, we have approved negotiated settlement of $47,000 case of Hassan Kalisakhan versus the city of Boynton Beach. May I have a motion to approve?
I'll move.
Second.
All those in favor state so by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes.
Thank you, Mayor, for giving me the opportunity to speak on this. This is not an item that's on the agenda. This is something I simply wanted to bring up. I forgot to mention it during my informational items, so I wanted a little bit of time to discuss it briefly. I do want to thank the commission for their willingness to support a resolution in support of extension of TPS, which is Temporary Protected Status, to the nearly 60,000 residents or Haitian Americans living, oh, I can't call them Haitian Americans, Haitian individuals living here in the U.S. at this time, since the inception of it in 2010. A decision was reached by the secretary to indefinitely terminate the Temporary Protected Status for those nearly 60,000 individuals as of July 2019. So basically, as of now, there is a countdown that has begun, and so we are going to be entering a time of turmoil and, I would say, fear in that a lot of individuals are going to now start feeling a looming clock over their heads. So I do ask for the public to be aware of this, to be mindful of the fact that there are families that are now facing the predicament of being divided from their children, from their spouses, and these are very scary times for these families and these individuals. Boynton Beach as a city has, I don't know the exact number, because census never really asks whether you're Haitian on the census, but we know that there's a significant number of Haitians living in Boynton Beach, so this is a very big problem that hits close to home. So I do again ask for the support of the community. If you do know someone who's Haitian or of Haitian descent, please just let them know that, give them whatever support I guess you can in terms of letting them know you stand with them, because I believe this is a time that, you know, this is going to cause some, a lot of trouble within the Haitian community. I do ask that the commission, we consider in the future talks of potential sanctuary city status, because I do not feel that it would be right for us to, in essence, willingly or givingly, provide information to hurt or to separate these families, especially in light of the fact that there was a judgment by a Supreme Court judge or a Circuit Court judge, I believe, to ban the executive order by President Trump to defund or to not fund cities that chose to take that stance. So I would ask that staff perhaps take some initiative or ask, I would ask to just research the possibility of doing that, and I would also ask the commission to entertain the possibility of supporting something like this, again, to just allow for these families to at least somewhat feel safe in their own homes, in their jobs, in their communities. So thank you for the time, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor, I'd just like to make a comment in regards to that. On the news this afternoon, they had a minister from the Haitian community, she was on there speaking, and she was talking about some of the Haitians already began to sell, begun to sell their homes. I'm just saying, they're asking ministers that have churches to take over their churches. I'm just saying, so it's going to be, it's a rocky road that we're already on, and I'm just saying, you know, we do need to lift them up, and I'm just saying, you know, it is what it is. I'm just saying, but we are in support of the Haitian community, you know, Boynton, because when I ran, I ran on the tenancy, it was saying that, you know, that I would not support this, and I'm still not supporting it, but I am not the president of the United States. Not yet. I might run.
Yeah?
Scary thought.
So Commissioner Romulus, would you want to put that on a future agenda item?
Yes, if this, if that would be the will of the commission and if no one sees any opposition to that.
All right. Oh, yeah. So we'll take a look at other resolutions that other cities have passed to see if that works within our city and so that our attorneys can craft what's best for the residents of Boynton Beach.
Appreciate it.
Mr. Mayor, of future agenda items, can we have D, item D of future items, agenda items, put on the next agenda? I think it's ready to be discussed.
Is it?
Yeah, I didn't have, wasn't certain. We just met with Ocean Ridge last week, so we'll, Jim said he'll be ready for December 5.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
What is it that we're putting on?
Allowing the dogs at the beach.
Oh.
Item D.
All right. And Commissioner Casello and Vice Mayor Katz, is there any disclosures that you would like to make before we adjourn?
No, just that our delay was caused by the fact that, as many of you know, Commissioner Casello is running for House Seat 90 in the Florida House Representatives, and he had a candidate screening for the Palm Beach County Treasure Coast AFL-CIO, which is a group of unions, of which I'm a president of one of them, so I'm happy to announce that the AFL-CIO recommended endorsing Commissioner Casello for his race for House District 90.
All right. Thank you. And we wish you further good luck.
Thank you.
And your race. May I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll move.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Happy Thanksgiving, staff.
Happy Thanksgiving here.
Happy Thanksgiving to everyone.